We're going to call the meeting to order, committee of the whole meeting for the council to order.
Is your mic on?
Yes. They're in the other room now.
Well, welcome everybody to the Middleton City Hall. I'm going to call the meeting of the Middleton Plan Commission for Saturday, January 25th, 2022, order. And the next is you will go with the roll call.
Do we have a roll call for the committee to open?
Here.
I think we're all here, huh?
Looks good.
Sullivan Nelson.
Here.
Hoon.
Here.
Here. They're all on.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
Ramsey.
And the roll call for the Plan Commission.
Here.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
And Brown.
Yeah. All right.
Hey, the first thing on our agenda this morning is a presentation for our tax incremental financing. Who's going to, Bill, are you going to take that? Thank you.
We talked about Michael. Boy, what a change, huh?
Good morning, everyone. It's kind of been a tradition now for the last few years to start this meeting off with an overview of the TIF districts in Middleton. As you know, TIF is very important for the city of Middleton and its developments and its finances. And what we'd like to go through first is an overview of a little bit of background of TIF in general, but more specifically how TIF has been used in Middleton, then get into the meat of the TIF III and TIF V financial models. And you have a copy of the summaries at your place and we'll walk through that. And then get into some policy issues related to the TIF districts for your consideration. So that'll be the first section of the meeting. And then after that, we'll move into the discussion about the new TIF policy and going through some examples on the policy. But to give a little foundation, looking at TIF, when we use TIF, that means tax incremental financing, and that's the name for the financing tool. When I refer to TID, TID just means a tax incremental district. And in Middleton, we have two districts that use TIF financing. Generally, the way TIF works is that when a TID is created, the current value at the time of creation is determined. And that property value and the taxes that are being paid on that property value continue to be split among all the different taxing jurisdictions as they were before the TID was created. So in Wisconsin, that's the city, the county, school districts, technical colleges, and properties within a newly created TID district continue to pay taxes to each of those based on what the value was when the TID was created. The thing that the TID introduces is then any increase in value from that creation date through the life of the TIF district is captured 100% by the city and specifically for projects within that TIF district. And then at closure, that value goes to all the different taxing jurisdictions and is available for all of the different purposes again. TIF is a powerful financial tool, and it's also one of the very few financial tools that cities in Wisconsin have for economic development. There aren't many other flexibilities for adjusting tax rates or doing tax abatement or other grants are pretty limited. So TIF is really the primary tool that's used in Wisconsin, and it's very heavily used. This graphic is from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue from their TIF manual, and this tries to illustrate graphically what I was just describing about how the value works with a TIF district. So at the time of TIF creation, you have a certain property value within that area, and the taxes based on that value are split between the different taxing jurisdictions. And that's showing continued during the life of the TIF. And then in this green triangle, that's representing the increase in value. And generally, that starts off pretty small, but over time continues to build as more and more projects are added during the life of the TIF district. And 100% of that value stays within the TID and is used for projects and development within the district. Then when you get to the point of the TIF closing, all of this value, which is now this entire area on the graph, is split between the different taxing jurisdictions. So the idea is that you have revenue coming in from the taxes being paid in the district to pay for development, but with the end goal that you've increased the tax base, not just for the city, but all of the different taxing jurisdictions, and all of them will benefit at the closure of the TIF district. That also is true in a smaller sense when you do a subtraction of territory from a TIF district. You don't have to just wait until the TIF closes and then split all the value. You can incrementally, through the life of the TID, take portions of the property out through a TIF subtraction, and that's a way to have all the taxing jurisdictions benefit from that value throughout the life of the TID. And we've done that several times with TID III in Middleton, and at the end of this section, we'll talk about another portion of subtraction coming up. Just a couple other details about how TIFs work. When you create a TID district or when you're amending a current district, that requires approval of not just the city where the TID is located, but also a joint review board. The joint review board includes membership from the city, school district, county, technical college, and then there's a citizen member appointed. So you have a five-member joint review board. And that joint review board needs to approve the project plan, identifying what types of projects and spending are allowable in the TIF district. And that's also a way for the other taxing jurisdictions to have a voice in the creation of a TID or changes to a TID, to make sure that there's support, and it's not just the city that's impacting the tax base for the other jurisdictions. There are several rules about how TIDs are created. One of the most important for Middleton is what's called the 12% limit. And that is a limitation that you cannot create a new district or add territory to an existing district if the total value of property in TIF districts in a municipality is over 12% of the total property value in the city. And for Middleton, because we have large districts that have been very successful, we are over that limit, and we have been for some time. We're currently at about 17% of the value of the city located within our TIF districts. So that means for Middleton, we are unable to create a new district, and the only way that we could add territory to a district is if we subtract territory. And as part of that subtraction, you have an opportunity to add some value back in based on the base value of what you're subtracting and what you're adding back in. But if we weren't doing a subtraction, we wouldn't be able to just expand to add property into the TIF district. So if we look specifically at Middleton, this is a map of the city, and it's showing our two TIF districts that are active, TID III in the blue and TID V in the red. TID III is generally on the west side of the city, includes a lot of the office development on the west part of the city. It also extends and includes the downtown area. TID V is primarily along the Parmenter Corridor and then extending east through the Pheasant Branch Creek area and picking up some property along Century and Allen Boulevard up in this area. There's an area in the middle, kind of shown in the purple, and that is where there was an overlay. So property that was originally in TIF District Number Three, when TID V was created, it overlapped some of the territory of TID III. And what that does is effectively takes those properties that were in TID III, and now they're considered part of TIF District Number Five. So they're available for both the revenue and the expenditure time periods that are in TID V.
Well, since they're overlapping, could you ask, could they also be considered TIF three as well? I mean, for some reasons?
No, for purposes of if we're doing spending on a project right now from one of those areas, the TID V, that would fall under a TIF V. So it'd be a TIF V expense. Any increment that's generated from this point forward in those territories goes to TIF District Number Five.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, the other thing I wanted to point out on this map is if you look at TID III, there are several holes, kind of clear white areas that are shown within the TIF district, including this large area in the old Office Park. Those are areas that were in TID III originally that have been subtracted out over time. The city's done several subtractions and taken several hundred million dollars of value out of the TIF district that's available for all those taxing jurisdictions. And so as areas have developed and obligations have been paid off, the city has removed those from the TID that is a benefit to the taxpayers and helps the other taxing jurisdictions. We do have to maintain contiguity in the district, so you can't just separate out an area and then have this gap. What's left has to be connected. And if you would look at the detail of the map, you'd see that there's at least some point that connects all of this property that's still remaining in TID III.
Yeah, the count.
So looking at Middleton, as I mentioned, we have two active districts. Our TIF District Number Three has been incredibly successful over its life. And I looked at the 2019 numbers, and for 2019, it is the largest single TIF district in the state of Wisconsin in terms of the total property value. We've been kind of in the number one, number two with some communities in the Milwaukee and southeast Wisconsin area. We're now number one. Part of that is certainly because of the success of the district, and part of that is also because Middleton generally has done a smaller number of large TIF districts that include a large area. So some cities like Madison will have many more TIF districts than Middleton, and they'll do a lot of TIFs that are very specific on individual projects. Middleton has taken the philosophy of do large areas. That gives a lot of flexibility. When you have a new project coming in, you don't have to go through the long process of creating a new TIF district. And it also gives you some flexibility of being able to have increment generated in one area that helps with other projects in another area and overall helps with the benefit of development of the city.
Well, could it be asked, so it got 10-year extension from the state? That made some difference to?
Yep. I was just going to mention that. Thank you. Yeah. So one of the unique things about TIF District Number Three, normally a redevelopment TIF district like TIF III has a maximum life of 27 years. TIF III did get special legislative approval to extend its life period by an additional 10 years. So TID III has a total life of 37 years. And there's a certain number of territory amendments you can do to either subtract or add territory. And as part of that extension, they also added some additional territory amendments. So for TID III, based on the extended life, TID III needs to close by 2030, and we have two territory amendments remaining. TIF District Number Five is required to close by 2036, and that's based on the normal TIF lifespan for TID V. Are there any questions on TIF in general before we get into the financial projections?
Bill, you talked about the maximum amount of assessed value in the TID. Would it, under the rules, are we required to bring it down to 12 through subtractions?
No, you're not required to. So when you create a district, you have to be under that 12. But over time, if that TID is successful and the value grows, you don't have to bring it down under that 12. You can operate it with being over that 12%. And when you do a subtraction, you don't have to bring it down to 12%. You just can't add territory if you're over that. So if we're at 17%, we reduce it to 15%, that's okay. We just can't create a new district, and we can't do an independent amendment to add territory. If you do a subtraction at the same time as an addition, there is a way that you can add some territory even if you're over that limit. And my understanding of how that works is that you look at the base value of what's being subtracted from the TIF district. So that's the lower value, the initial value. And then you would look at the current value of what you're adding. And if the current value of what you're adding is less than the base value of what you're subtracting, then you can add that. And I think the reason for that is that you're not having a net increase in your base value. So when we started talking about TIF subtractions, we had a meeting with Department of Revenue and went through some scenarios. That's our understanding. But if we're looking at another subtraction, we would want to sit down with Department of Revenue and work through the numbers and make sure that we're all in agreement on how that would work.
A question. What's the dollar amount of 1%? I'm trying to figure out what 5% over means. What's, what would be the amount of 1%?
Yeah, so city's total value right now is about 3.8 billion.
Okay.
So 1% would be about 38 million. Yeah.
Bill, when you first map out a district for TIF funding, is it, do you just choose boundaries? How do you, how do you choose where they are? And it sounds like it sort of changes over time, the shape of it?
Yeah, so when you first create a TIF district, it is up to the city to propose a boundary. So yeah, you just, you would map out a boundary. You'd look at areas you want to include. Generally, if you have areas that you're expecting development or redevelopment to occur, you'll want to include those.
Start there.
So if there's a new business park, and I think when TID III was created, a lot of the areas on the west side of the city that there was thought of a future development, those were all included. They generally are going to have a pretty small base value because they're generally vacant land at that time, and then you expect the value to grow over the time. Other areas like the downtown would have a higher base value because there would have been some development there, but they're areas where you anticipate the potential for redevelopment in the future. And then you have to make sure that it's contiguous. So you would look at various options, probably consider several boundaries, and then that's something that the city council and the joint review board would look at in deciding to go forward with the district.
Bill, one thing. I just would like to add to what Bill's saying by saying that the city has had this model in place since 1993 so that it's a part and parcel of the comprehensive plan of the community, so that when we actually put together a TID, there is a plan that goes along with that, and there's a huge narrative. We have those on our website for anybody who's interested in reading those, and they talk about all kinds of different policies that are involved. And in the recent years, we added sustainability, renewable energy, and workforce housing within the last 10 years. But in the original model of TID III, it was not as comprehensive, but we did include water, stormwater management, and many different roads that were built with TIF dollars. And there was a comprehensive focus. It's just expanded over time for both TID III and TID V. Yes?
I had a question from a constituent about why it's three and five. And if I remember correctly, one and two were the like originals, and they actually closed, they were successful. And then they asked me what four was, and I was like...
Four was...
I mean, I'm good, but I...
It was a Department of Revenue mistake that led us to have to recreate the district and reapply, and so we couldn't reapply as District Four. We had to reapply as District Five.
Thank you for explaining that.
Changing a name, that's all there was.
Okay, so for both TIF districts, we have a financial model that we use frequently as we're managing TIF projects and we have tied in with our budget process. I'm going to walk through the summary of those models for TIF III and TIF V. At your place, the first two sheets, kind of the pull-out sections, are the full summary. And I've got slides that'll kind of take it step by step to walk through the elements of the model. Both of the sheets look similar, so look at the top and make sure you're on the one that says Tax Increment District Number Three. And just to kind of explain how this is oriented, on the left, it shows the year. Just to make this fit on one large sheet, for TIF III, it doesn't go all the way back to the creation of the district. We do have information by year, but this is just showing the most recent two years, 2018, 2019. Current year is highlighted in yellow in 2020, and then it shows it going through the remainder of the district through 2030. There's a dashed line between 2025 and 2026, and the reason for that is the expenditure period ends in 2025. So after that point, we can't create any new expenditures. We continue, can continue to pay debt service, and we continue to pay obligations on TIF bonds for projects that are already in place, but we can't do new spending after 2025. And then after 2030, the district's required to close. And then the model is organized with major sections going across from left to right. The first with the green heading is the sources of funds. And the first column in there, the largest source of fund by far, is the tax increment. So those are the taxes that are paid on that increase in property value in the TIF district. And for 2020, we're estimating about $11.3 million in tax increment, which, just stepping back, that's a huge number. And we are very fortunate in Middleton to have the amount of success we have and have that much development, to have the options available for this TIF district. We have an amount for interest income. TIFs earn interest on their available funds. Then it would show any debt proceeds coming in as revenue for the TIF district. Other revenue, and other revenue is a combination of several things. This includes some state aid programs. We get aid for computer equipment that was exempted. More recently, certain types of personal property were exempted. We get aid payments for that. One of the items that was included in the 2020 budget was the development of the downtown plaza, and the budget included a goal of $1 million of donations towards that plaza. So that's included in the other revenue category for 2020. And in total, we'd be looking at about $13 million of revenue for TID III in 2020. Did want to mention what we're showing as a placeholder for debt proceeds in 2022. There's an $11.8 million number shown. The city hasn't committed to that, but just for future planning and projections, we're showing a number there, and that is tied to the construction estimate for Pleasant View Road reconstruction, which is a very major, very expensive project. There will be federal dollars coming in, but there will be a large local share, which would be paid by the TIF district. And this model is assuming that we might want to borrow for that. Other projects, we've been able to cash fund because of the amount of increment we have coming in. And that's something that as we get closer, we can decide whether or not we want to borrow or use cash or use some combination of both.
Bill, can I make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
Just one thing on this for folks who might watch this video later on our YouTube channel and not understand why the city can have such tight concerns on our operating funds when we have this kind of money coming in to the TIF district. And that's because of the prescription by state law of how and where those funds can be spent and for what purpose, for economic development primarily, as well as whatever is in our TID plan related to economic development, stormwater management, renewable energy, workforce housing. All of those are included within the plan. However, we cannot use those funds to balance our operating budget. Those are intended for that specific statutory purpose for economic development. And a lot of folks get that confused. And they say, why is the city spending this money on this or that? And this is why, because it is prescribed by state law and by our plan, our own plan.
Moving over to the next section with the kind of reddish-purple-ish heading, this is the uses of funds. Column one, project cost, is where we've put city expenditures for city projects. So this could be professional services for our planners, engineers, legal, GIS services for the district, as well as capital projects for city-installed improvements. And there's a breakdown of that coming up in the next slide. What's labeled as developer payments are the payments that we're making on pay-as-you-go TIF agreements. So when we have a new development coming in, we generally have done those as developer financed, where the developer invests the costs upfront. Often, they will go out and take out a special loan, and then we make payments over time based on the increment that's generated from that development, and this is where those payments are shown. Column three for cost recovery is something that Middleton has done for many years now from TIF District Number Three to the general fund. And that was created as a way to reimburse the general fund for some of the costs that were created as a result of development within the TIF district. We know that that cost recovery needs to end at the end of 2025, at the end of the expenditure period. So the city has been reducing those cost recovery payments by $100,000 each year. I think the peak was about 1.8 million several years ago. In 2020, we're down to about 1.2 million, and the plan would have that continue to step down. One of the policy issues that I'll address towards the end of this section is we may want to look at trying to accelerate how we phase out that cost recovery and potentially use a TIF subtraction to help us with the phase out of that cost recovery. Because if we continue to reduce it by 100,000 each year, we're not going to have it eliminated by 2025, and that would make a major hole in our 2026 general fund budget. There's also a column for potential donations to another TIF district. Wisconsin law does allow for donations between certain types of TIF districts to other districts. And when the city did its last amendment of TIF District Number Three, it included a provision that would allow donations to be made from TID III to TID V. And the concept there would be that you would take the success of one TIF district and provide funds to another district to help facilitate additional development and kind of capitalize or leverage the success of a district in one area for further development and projects within another area of the city. That project plan amendment included 8.6-something million dollars of donations during the life of TID III. This is one of the policy issues we wanted to highlight, but what's shown in the model is potentially using donations in 2021 and 2022 tied to some of the infrastructure projects in TID V, most specifically Parmenter Reconstruction within TIF District Number Five. And there's also a placeholder of about $3 million shown in 2024 for potential infrastructure improvements related to development of the property that Meritor owns within TIF District Number Five. We don't have a specific timeline there, but that's just put in as a placeholder.
You have two values, 5.7 million for infrastructure in your description, and then in this table, you have 5 million. So why is the difference of $700,000?
It's shown as 2021 and 2022. So there's $664,000 in 2021, and then 5 million. And the thought there, and these are kind of rough, but trying to look at if there's design work in the first year and then construction the following year.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Why would you, why would you transfer funds from one TID to another when they're set up almost as separate entities, right? You have borrowed exclusively for TID V, so it's not like there's, Bill, there's no lack of funds available, right? Because you can borrow for those infrastructure issues, right? So why would you make that transfer? Why wouldn't you just let that TID III stand on its own, let TID V stand on its own, let any other successive TID stand on its own? Because financially, it makes sense to, essentially, what you're doing from the original TIF is you're saying to the constituents, I want you to defer any benefit that those taxes, those incremental taxes, could bring, and I want you to wait until the TID is over before you recognize those. So the whole city has deferred infrastructure on the rest of the city, park improvements, road improvements, other improvements, on the bet that the city's tax base is going to rise because of this. So now at the end of that thing, at the end of that first district, you're saying, well, wait a minute. Instead of giving you that 8 million bucks, I'm going to move it to another district, essentially try and double down on some other improvement when you don't really need to. If you have debt available, why wouldn't you just bring that back to the taxpayers and say, we thank you for letting us borrow this increment? We're going to make it up by fixing all that deferred infrastructure that we, that we put off.
Mark, I think you asked four or five questions there. So I'm going to try to address the first one and then let Bill address the rest. The first question is, why would you do that? And the reason is state law allows, our tax increment District Three plan allows. And thirdly, when we first started TID III, we borrowed, and we borrowed at a higher interest rate than we can borrow from ourselves. So city attorney says, as long as you are paying yourself interest, he recommended 1%, you can donate from one, one TID to the other, and as long as you're paying something in interest, he's satisfied with that as, as an answer. So we can effectively borrow from ourselves less than we can on the market.
That's not the same as donation.
Yeah.
But you're, what you're talking about there is that you're making a loan to a separate TID with the expectation that the principal and interest get paid back to the originator.
My point is that in TID III, we borrowed those funds. Here, we can donate it, and I guess you don't have to pay interest on a donation. It's only on an advance.
Yeah, so I can address a few things with your comments, but just to clarify, in advance, think of that as a loan, but from one district to another. You provide funds, it's paid back with principal and interest over time. The city has done that between TID III and TID V, and that's something we'll get into in the TID V model of how and when those would be repaid. I see, Susan, can I just answer first? What is shown in the model here, in addition to those advances, would be potentially looking at doing donations on top of that. And it, there's certainly, it's a policy question of whether you would want to have each TID completely stand on its own or look at donations. A couple of reasons why you might want to look at donations is, especially for TIF District Number Five right now, we have a fair amount of debt that's outstanding, and we have advances. So just the repayment of those items is going to take some time. That's going to make it very difficult to do addition. That's going to make it very difficult to do additional projects in the short term in TID Five, and the clock is ticking on TID Five's life cycle. Donations would allow you to take the success of one district and provide funds to another district, and if those are for projects for infrastructure and things that'll help facilitate development, it's a way to leverage your success from one area of the city to have further economic development in other areas. As I said, we can't create new districts, and we can't create a new TID with a longer 20-some-year life cycle anymore. This is a way we can use the success of Three for infrastructure in Five that will hopefully help generate additional increment in TID Five. It is something that's allowable by state law. It's also something that the city and all of the other taxing jurisdictions had agreed to in the latest TIF project plan. So there's already some policy direction to say, this is at least something to consider. Whether or not we want to go forward with that is a decision for the council. But I would say, I'm aware of other cities in the area that have done this, and I think that you want to consider the purpose if you are doing a donation. Is it something that's going to help benefit that other district in the long term? And if you're comfortable with that, I think it's an available option.
One thing to mention as well is that TID Five started off as a blighted TID. And TID Three had parts that were blight, but it was not blight majority, which is what TID Five is. And so we knew when we connected that Parmenter Street Highway 12 corridor that we were going to try to help the Allen Boulevard area as well. And you can see how we tied those together in the map that Bill showed earlier so that we could help improve areas of the community that are a little bit tougher to incentivize with economic development.
Can I just follow up on that? So what I hear the implication of a donation is, is that the recipient TID is incapable of building enough increment to pay off that service from its increment? Which leads me to question, why do it then?
I think the issue, and it might be helpful as I get into the TIF Five model, I think there is sufficient increment to pay the existing obligations, but I think it makes it difficult until those are paid off to do a lot of new projects. And if that's the case, you may end up to the point where there's only a small number of years remaining, and you don't get as much benefit as you would as if you could kind of spur some of that by doing the donation.
But you could, my point is, is that you don't need that transfer. The new TID can borrow for those infrastructure projects and keep all of the costs and all of the revenue sources within the TID. What you're doing here is you're denying the originating TID the benefit of those years. And I can see doing that if what you're saying is that the successor TID or the recipient TID is just incapable of creating enough increment. And that's a whole different set of circumstances that we'd need to consider. And I'm not hearing that. So again, why would you donate that money to a successor TID or a recipient TID when you can borrow for that and keep all the costs contained? The only thing that I can think of is that what it says is that you don't ever think that the new TID is going to create enough increment to both pay off the debt service and to build additional increment. And that's really a project issue, isn't it?
Yeah, I want to go back and ask with clarification, because when we close out a TID, it's my understanding the money that's there is going to be divided up among the four taxing jurisdictions. And that's money that will reduce the levies for those jurisdictions. It's not a chunk of money that will be available for those jurisdictions to use. Is that correct?
Partially. Let me explain a little bit. So when a TIF district closes, there's two things that happen. All of that tax base, that's that increase in value that's been generated, is available for the other taxing jurisdictions. That would tend to reduce property tax rates of all the jurisdictions. For cities, there is the ability that you can have an adjustment to your general levy limit, and that's based on the half of the value that was created in the TIF district divided by your total value, and that gives you a percentage increase. So at closure, you would have the ability to increase your levy limit, but not based on the full value of the TID. So you would have some additional levy authority, there'd be some reduction in property tax rates. The other thing that happens at the closure of a TID is if there's a residual balance, so say there's $10 million left at the end of a TIF district, that $10 million in cash gets split among each of the different partners and the different taxing jurisdictions. And that's based on your share of the tax rate. So for the city, say that's 30%. So if there's $10 million left at the end of the TID, the city would get 3 million, the schools might get 5 or 6, county and technical college get something. And that's money that can be used for any public purpose. So it could be used for a capital project, you could use it in your general fund budget, but you wouldn't want to use it for ongoing costs like staff because it's one-time money. I think, getting back to the argument about donations, and it's definitely, there's legitimate policy arguments on both sides. You know, one thing to consider is that with TID Three, the city has done several subtractions over time, and we're talking about doing another one. So we are already providing a benefit to all the taxpayers by taking land out of TID Three early. And if we were to wait and not do donations and have a larger balance at the end of the TID, the city gets maybe 30% of that versus if we donate it to another TIF district for an infrastructure project, we're getting the full value of that. It somewhat reduces what the other taxing jurisdictions are getting, and that's part of why donations need to be approved in a project plan, approved by the Joint Review Board with members from each jurisdiction. But the argument for doing a donation like that would be if you're doing that for a project, for an infrastructure project, you know, rebuilding a street or extending utilities that helps facilitate redevelopment there, hopefully, the goal is that at the end of the Five in this case, you have more value than you otherwise would if you had to rely on your own revenues and your own debt and debt service and covering the interest on that debt.
I'd like to say that in hearing Mark's questions, I think he raises fair points. And I would be open to a, maybe not one or the other of no donations or no loans or completely return to the taxpayers, but somewhere in there, I think, would be healthy. But the one thing I do want to bring up, and Mark, you might have some thoughts on this, is that with TIF Three being number one in the state, I sometimes think, well, then TIF Five should be healthy like TIF Three. But then I have to remind myself that TIF Five is probably average. So it may not be doing as well as TIF Three, but I think TIF Three is an outlier. Like, however the ecosystem was, and the investment that occurred, and probably the location, and a little bit of luck, its return is, and if I remember correctly, last year, it was like the percentage was huge, it was a huge percentage in return over time. But if TIF Five is average, where it is returning its amount and then maybe a plus sum, we shouldn't say it's basically not functioning. It's average, that's normal. And if we're comparing it to TIF Three, that can be, it could seem like it's not functioning. But in actuality, it's healthy. So, Mark, I hear what you're saying about returning money to the taxpayers. I'm always for that, but I could see, too, doing some, either small loans or donations, to help boost that healthy system and maybe push it towards an outlier.
Yeah, and maybe if I could, I don't think we're going to settle this today, and we don't need to. I wanted to raise some of these as policy issues and kind of show what they would look like in the model. But I think I'd like to keep going, because we're already kind of in danger of getting off schedule. And I think a lot of these are discussions that we will come back with in future Council and Finance Committee meetings and discuss what strategy we want to follow. Just to try to move through the rest of the model, and then you'll have these to look at as well. There's a box in the bottom center of the two models that show from the Capital Improvement Plan, the planned project costs over the next five years. Just wanted to highlight that the plaza is in there, Pleasant View Road reconstruction is the largest project that's planned. In TID Three, we do have a placeholder for other TIF projects of about 1.8 to 2.3 million per year. And in addition, we have about $9 million of additional projects for infrastructure and parking in 2024 that could help support some of the TIF-eligible costs of a community campus development, and we'll talk about more of that later today. The section in blue in the model is the debt service. So these are the principal and interest payments that we're making each year. TID Three is down to about $2 million outstanding in principal. That would be paid off fully in 2022. And then for projection purposes, as I mentioned, I'm showing 11.8 million of borrowing for Pleasant View Road. That debt would start in 2023 and extend through the life of the district. And then the final section on the right of each model looks at the fund balance. So this is the money that the district has remaining at the end of the year. If we look at 2019, it had a surplus of $129,000. Cumulative fund balance over time is 12.3 million. Of that, 6.8 million has been loaned to the golf course and to TIF District Number Five through advances. So that's money that's not cash available, but it is money that would be repaid to the district over time. So the available cash at the end of 2019 in TID Three is about 5.5 million. In 2020, there's a negative number for the annual. That means we would be projecting to spend more than we're taking in in 2020, and we'd be drawing down on a portion of that available balance. We're also showing the anticipated repayment of part of the advance from TIF Five to TID Three related to the Conservancy Bend property purchase. And when that closing takes place, which is currently scheduled for January 31st, the direction from council is we would take that 2.6 million and repay part of that advance. Shown over time, all the advances would be repaid by the end of the district, and based on these assumptions, it would show a balance at the end of the TID of about 38 million. I would be cautious about using that number, however, because there are a lot of assumptions and a lot of things that could change. And especially if we're looking at subtractions and how much we subtract, that could lower that amount. But TID Three is a healthy TID and is likely to have a sizable balance at the end, but I don't want to commit to it's going to be 38 million. TID Five is, the model is organized the same way. So in interest of time, I'm not going to go into quite as much detail. Here, you can look through the model. TID Five is probably more of an average TID, and I should say, there are a lot of TIDs in Wisconsin that perhaps aren't doing very well at all. And TID Five, we're projecting to generate 1.3 million in increment this year. That is a very healthy number, it's just not as huge as TID Three. The other revenue that's shown in 2020, that includes the land sale for Conservancy Bend, the 2.6-some million, so that's part of why that other revenue is so high. And then this shows the other side of the donations as revenue coming in. And again, that's future policy discussion. Uses of funds for project costs, city financed, which would be if the city was doing upfront TIF assistance, which it did for the Oak Ridge Project, that's the 1.5 million shown in 2018, and then developer financed incentives similar to TID Three. Again, there's the grid showing the planned project costs over the next five years. And based on the adopted budget, the large project in 2020 is for construction of the portion of the Northeast Connector that's located in TID Five, about 1.2 million. Based on the CIP that was reviewed as part of the budget process, the largest projects in 2021 and 2022 are the Parmenter and Lisa Lane Reconstruction. And these are projects that are what would be shown to be funded by donations in the model. They could be funded with additional debt, however, we already have a large portion of the debt and advances that are being repaid, so that's kind of the trade-off that we were starting to discuss. If we're just looking at available cash, it would probably take some time before we're able to do significant projects in the TID because we have those existing obligations we're paying off. If we look at the debt service, TID Five currently has 7.6 million in principal outstanding, and that is shown to be fully repaid by the end of the district. So we're spending about $600,000 to $700,000 per year in debt service in TID Five. And then if we look at the fund balance, at the end of 2019, TID Five has a negative fund balance of about 3.9 million. And we do have those advances from TIF District Number Three, and with that, we have available cash, but we're showing that the available cash will be close to zero at the end of 2020 without additional borrowing, advances, or donations. If we look at the fund balance over the life of the district, it does show that it would have a positive fund balance, be able to repay the debt, repay those advances, and actually end with a potentially sizable balance by the end of the TID. I think the main issue here is timing, that right now, there's more of a cash flow challenge in this district, and that makes it hard to look at taking on significant additional debt or doing significant additional projects until some of those existing obligations are paid off. And we've kind of gotten into the policy discussions already, but wanted to highlight a few things. We've been talking about subtractions. With TIF Three, there have been four subtractions already in the life of TID Three, and those have subtracted $340 million in value from the TID that's available for the general tax base. And that alone is a very large number. There are a lot of TIDs in this state that never reached 340 million in total for their values, so we're very fortunate to have been in that situation. We do have two territory amendments remaining, and what we're suggesting is looking at an additional subtraction in 2020. And our project management team of staff and working with our consultants have gone through and looked parcel by parcel in TID Three and have developed, this is kind of a rough map as a starting point. A couple of the large items that we are looking at are Spectrum and Costco. Both of those have TIF obligations that we're expecting to be completed in 2020. So when those projects went in, we had developer agreements, we have obligations to make payments over time. Those will be fully repaid this year, and that would give us the opportunity to take those two out and then add that tax base to the general available tax base. And in looking at that, we started to say, well, what other properties are either fully developed, or do we think it's unlikely that they're going to redevelop between now and 2025 at the end of the expenditure period? So we've looked at some of the car dealerships up in the northeast of the district, some of the properties that have developed along Deming Way, some of the retail down here near Costco, and then looking at some of the office development down along Greenway Boulevard. So in total, based on those areas, we'd be looking to get a goal of a net of 125 million. The actual value of those right now is more like 135 million, but we need to subtract out the base value. So we're hoping to get a net of about 125 million for a subtraction. Spectrum would be the largest piece of that. And the way the timing would work is that if we do a subtraction this year before September, that would affect the values for 2021 and then revenue year of 2022. And as I had mentioned earlier, we might have the possibility to look at some small territory additions in conjunction with a subtraction. So looking at the subtraction, it works very similar to when a TIF would close, that you would reduce the increment that's being generated. Just like with a TIF closure, based on a change in state law a couple of years ago, there's now the ability that you could get a levy limit adjustment based on half of the value of what's being subtracted compared to the total value of the city. And that was not true for the city's previous subtractions, those just went to tax rate reduction. The city would have an option here that we could still have some of that tax rate reduction as well as have an adjustment to our levy limit, which we're estimating might be in the range of about $260,000 per year. And then holding all else equal, we would also expect that even with taking advantage of that, we would still see a decrease in the total tax rate of perhaps 3% or 4%. As I mentioned earlier, we need to look at the TIF cost recovery and need to have a plan to phase that out completely by the end of the expenditure period. And reducing it by $100,000 per year has helped, but it would still show a gap of $576,000 at the 2026 budget. So what I'm suggesting that we start to look at is increasing that $100,000 reduction each year to $150,000, and that'll be a challenge in our operating budget. We know how tight our operating budgets are. However, we do hope that based on some of the development and a large part of a lot of the development that's being discussed in the TIF district will help us with our net new construction percentage that drives our levy limit in future years. The other thought would be to use the additional levy limit adjustment from the TIF subtraction and put 100% of that towards phasing out the cost recovery. And this chart kind of identifies what that would look like, that if we look at where we are with the prior year cost recovery from the 2020 budget, if we switch to reducing that by 150 per year, and then in 2022- that by 150 per year, and then in 2022, we'd get this large adjustment from the subtraction, rounding up here to 276. We'll have to calculate exactly what comes from the subtraction once it's approved. But if you could have a larger adjustment that year, potentially get down to about 600,000 each year for the cost recovery in 2022. And then you get to a point where if you reduce it by 150 each year, to look at having that completely phased out. So just kind of in summary, because I, I'm out of time for my section, future things we should be discussing in the coming months, whether or not we want to proceed with the TIF subtraction and what we want that to look at, like, do we want to use the levy limit adjustment for cost recovery, revisiting the question of donations between the TIDS as part of future budget planning? And then in the future, deciding if we want to borrow for Pleasant View Road and then what amount we would want to borrow for. So just kind of previewing items we'll be discussing in the coming months.
Well, so, you know, the, could you actually work out the model where you get the donation versus you borrow the money? So I think that will be something good to discuss because Mark and others have a good point. So we've got to look at those options. So, you know, how do they compare?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good suggestion. And we can run some alternative models and bring that forward through Finance Committee and Council as we consider that.
And also with the Pleasant View Road, how about if we don't borrow, use the TIF money, what would it do? So those options as well. So, thank you.
So we're running, looks like about 15 minutes behind schedule, so we'll try to get into this next topic quickly. As you all know, the city recently adopted a TIF policy that was approved in early January. There were a few minor changes that were made, and the final version of the document is now on the TIF page of the city website, so you can go look at that on the link. One of the ideas that came up from city council members was to develop some sort of TIF evaluation tool that could be used not only by the staff as we're preparing a recommendation, but also by city council members and finance committee members during your deliberations. And so that's what we're going to be talking about here in this section. And this is what the TIF chart looks like. It should be included in all of your packets. We also have extra copies on the table for anybody in the audience that wants to look at it. All of the items from this evaluation chart came directly from the approved policy. So we're not including anything in here that wasn't already approved by the city council in the policy. So we looked at a few different options, including a scorecard. And what we are recommending is just this simple one-page evaluation chart. We're recommending against going with a formal scorecard. The reason for that is that many of these items, especially in Section 4 of the Project Evaluation Criteria, are going to be really difficult to put a number on. And also, there are, there could be a project that comes forward that the city council thinks really excels in one policy priority category, like, for example, environmental sustainability, but doesn't score points in other categories. And so it could score relatively low, but it may be a project that is really supported by the city. And on the flip side, there could be a project that scores a few points in each category but isn't really something that the city council wants to move forward with. So if you'll just bear with us as we walk through a few examples of using this TIF evaluation chart, we will also be asking for your feedback at the end. In this section of the presentation, we're going to be using these response card clickers. So if everybody could get their clicker out, the finance committee, or I'm sorry, the Plan Commission and the council should each have one of those. And then just hit the bottom button on the bottom left and make sure that you see the number 41 displayed at the top, so I can make sure that you guys are all still on the right channel to be able to respond. Okay, good. And we're using this not as a way to see who gets the most correct answers or anything. It's simply going to help us decide whether the tool will work well for this purpose.
We do both?
Yeah.
And also see who has the most answers?
Yeah. Oh, and I guess I should just mention, if you accidentally hit the wrong button when you're responding, you can change your answer. It's not going to double record your response, but it will allow you to reselect a new answer.
Fancy.
So the TIF evaluation chart, the way that we've set this up is that there are four separate sections, and a project would not move forward through the next section unless it meets the minimum criteria in the section before. So the correct project type must be met before we would move on to Section 2 and evaluate project costs. There has to be at least one extraordinary project cost before we would move on to Section 3 and evaluate the financial feasibility. And then the financial feasibility considerations must be met before we would move on to the final section, which is really more of the policy evaluation criteria.
So I'll talk, excuse me, talk a little bit about that Section 3 for the financial consideration. And for those of you on council and Finance Committee who had a preview of this with our discussion at the last Finance Committee meeting. But as part of the process, if a project gets to Stage 3, we would do a look at the pro forma and an operating cash flow analysis. And then based on that, we've identified kind of five key financial metrics that we would take a look at. In putting this together, I should say that we are relying in part on information provided by Ellers and Associates, who is one of the leading financial advisory firms in the Midwest and specifically the state of Wisconsin. And we've gone through some training that they've put on in the past about how to review development performas and how to look at rates of return and what they consider to be typical ranges of returns for market rate projects. So the first two financial metrics are looking at a cash-on-cash return and an internal rate of return. And to define what those are, a cash-on-cash return would be an analysis that would be appropriate to look at for an income-producing residential or commercial project. It looks at, for each year, what are the income sources of funds, the expenditures? You get to a net operating income. Then you would factor in debt service and TIF payments to come down to your annual cash flow. And then compare that annual cash flow to a percentage of the original developer equity on the project. And based on the information that Ellers had provided, they've said anywhere from 6% to 12% once a project is stabilized may be a reasonable or a typical rate of return for these type of projects. The second measure of return on the project would be looking at the internal rate of return, or the IRR. And that also would be used for income-producing projects. And it considers not just the annual cash flow, but it also looks at what's the anticipated value of the project at a point in the future? What would be the remaining debt service? And so what would be the potential net sale proceeds from the project? So it looks at a discounted cash flow analysis, looking at what's the initial investment in equity? What's the cash flow over a certain period of time? And then what's the anticipated sale proceeds at a point in the future? And that might look at a 15-year cycle to say, what is the initial investment, cash flow for 15 years? If the property were to be valued and sold, any obligations paid off? And you factor all of those payments in, what's the discounted rate? And again, from the information from Ellers, they've said that a typical range might be 12% to 18% at the time of sale. Maybe somewhere around the middle of that range might be a reasonable benchmark to look at if a project is above or below that rate of return. Three other measures that we thought would be good to highlight for each project that gets to this stage. First, looking at the developer fee. It is typical for these type of projects to have a development fee included as one of the source, or, excuse me, the uses of funds or part of the construction costs. And that would be a fee that would be intended to reimburse the developer for their costs in bringing a development forward, including things like their staff, their overhead, some of their initial costs in identifying and bringing forward a development project. A typical range might be 3% to 6% of total development cost for a market rate project. And certain other types of projects may have different percentages that are reasonable, and that's something we would look at based on the type of project. And then for projects where a certain amount of TIF assistance is being considered, we could also look at a couple of measures of that TIF assistance itself. One of those would be looking at comparing the amount of TIF funding to the amount of developer equity going into a project. Generally, there would be a source, a mix of different sources of funds for a project. And that might include private financing, getting a private bank loan, developer equity, there could potentially be some grant dollars outside of the city, and then the amount of TIF assistance. And kind of a general rule of thumb for most market rate projects is that you would want the amount of developer equity to be at least equal or greater than the amount of TIF assistance being provided. So one way to look at that is take the TIF funding divided by the amount of developer equity to get a percentage. And with the thought that for general market rate projects, you'd want that to be less than 100%. And then finally, looking at the percentage of increment that's being applied each year during the life of the project, to the project versus the general TID. And there, it's really difficult to come up with what a typical or a target range would be because there's so much variation in the type of the project. Generally, the city has a goal of trying to ensure that not all of the increment is going solely to the project, that we want the project to generate increment for the benefit of the general TID and to pay for city projects. But it really depends on the project. If there's a really challenging, small redevelopment project with, say, soil contamination, demolition, and high costs for a relatively small project, there may be reasons why 100% of the increment going for that project could be justified. Maybe that's the only way to get that area cleaned up, is if you allocate all of the increment for it. There might be another project that maybe it's a huge project and generating a ton of tax base, but financially, it doesn't need as much TIF to be successful. And so there, you might have a much smaller percentage. Maybe 25% of the increment goes towards the project and 75% goes to the general TID. And that's really something that would be evaluated project by project, but it's something that we want to highlight as one of those key financial numbers.
Bill, a couple of things here. And, you know, you're dealing with numbers, but numbers always have a fuzzy factor, so these are all estimates. So do you have some thoughts about that?
Yeah, the way we would see this work is that as part of the TIF application process, we would be asking the developer for their pro forma and their numbers and their estimates. And then we would be reviewing that. Our TIF staff team, we would also have our assessor reviewing that. We're fortunate with the assessing firm that we have. They're the largest firm in the state. They look at a lot of income and expense information for different projects. And so they're a really good resource to look at. Are their developers' assumptions reasonable based on our market? Are their projected rents too high or too low? Are they using a reasonable cap rate? Are their expense ratios in line? And then we also will go to our other TIF consultants as needed. And for example, when we're looking at project costs, we'll frequently have our TIF engineer review things like, what are the soil conditions? Are those typical to a development or are they truly unusual? And are those reasonable estimates? With all of this, when we're projecting out, especially over 15 years, yes, they're estimates. The market could change, things could change. But we would do our best process to evaluate and make sure those assumptions look reasonable at the beginning. One thing we do as part of current practice and would as part of this as well, is that we have a look back on the actual costs after the project's completed. So a developer would identify what they anticipate are TIF-eligible costs. We agree on what's TIF-eligible and what's not. But then after the project is complete, we ask for actual documentation dollars. So if they said, we need to spend $200,000 on soils, we want to see the documentation and the invoices to say that, yes, they really did spend that much on that purpose.
And that part is really good. So the other question is, if you have to pay 100% of the TIF for a project, is it really worth doing? I mean, there are some issues there. I know we gave 100% in some cases, but now it's good that we have written a policy. But that really begs the question, well, should we be really doing this? So, yeah.
It does. I think there are certainly cases where it could be justified. And, you know, the example I was saying is if you had a very heavily contaminated property in your downtown, and nobody was touching it because of the environmental contamination, you might want to say that it's worth putting 100% of the increment towards that project for the next 10 years, if that means it gets cleaned up and you have a good development and at the end of the TIF, you have a positive tax-based project that everyone's benefiting from. I would say as a starting point, generally, we would say, no, we wouldn't start looking at 100%. But we didn't want to say that we would never consider that because there might be some certain circumstances where you want to consider that.
Yeah, I can see that cleanup example. That's a good example. Yes, thank you. Any other questions from Plan Commission or any members here? Okay.
Great. So now we're going to get into three project examples. And these will give you guys an opportunity to use the tool to evaluate these projects. So the first example, this is a luxury apartment development. It is on a 5.5-acre site, and the current land value... You do have two detailed spreadsheets for a couple of the options, but don't look at those now. Those are, those are for you guys to take home and look at in your own time. Just, I think you can probably glean all the information you need from what's in the presentation. So, okay. The current land value here is only $500. They're taking advantage of the cropland assessment. And the estimated completed value for this project is $45 million. In this case, the developer is proposing 300 market-rate multifamily housing units with 350 underground parking stalls. There are some really nice amenities, like a community room, a movie theater, and a fitness center in this project. The property will require a rezoning in order to accommodate the density of housing that is proposed. And the developer is not interested in pursuing any of the sustainability components for this project. And the project is also not consistent with the approved TIF project plan. So looking only at Section 1, the base requirements, can you please use your clickers and let us know if you think this project meets the requirements of Section 1 and should proceed to Section 2 for additional evaluation? A is true and B is false. And the responses are coming in. It looks like we have four so far, and I think we have 14 people total with clickers. Oh, actually, let me see. Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll go ahead and see what you thought about this one. So 77% of you thought that the answer was false and 23% thought true. The correct answer for this one is false. And that is because none of these eligible project types were listed. And so what the TIF policy recommends is that greenfield market-rate housing in general is not eligible for TIF. And this project also doesn't meet the requirement of Section 1. It is not consistent with the approved TIF project plan. So any questions about that example? No? Okay. Let's go on to Example 2. This project is an office development. It's on just over four acres of property in Middleton. The current value of, of the land is 840,000. It's, it's a greenfield site as well. The estimated completed value is 2.75 million. And the developer is proposing a 12,000-square-foot, single-tenant office development with 50 surface parking stalls. The development will include relocating 40 jobs from another Dane County community. The site is currently vacant. The developer has submitted a soils report that shows that is a complicated site due to the presence of moderately compressible clay and silt soils, and that structural fill will be required. This has added unexpected costs to the project. So using your clickers again, please respond whether this project meets the requirements of Section 1 and should proceed to Section 2 for additional evaluation? A, true; B, false.
The developer is bringing those jobs and we're not poaching them, right?
They're, they're being relocated, and there are no new jobs being created. It's just relocating 40 jobs from a nearby community. So right now, you're just simply looking at whether the project type is eligible. We're not going on to Section 2 or 3 at this point. I think we have three people who still haven't clicked in. Does everybody respond? Maybe we've got a clicker or two that's not...
Abby, the clickers turn off real quickly, so you're, we're having to turn them back on.
I think it should automatically turn back on when you push the button. It should be automatic. It should be automatic.
Oh.
One more. All right, let's go ahead and display the results of this one. 58% said true and 42% said false. So, I think we might, there might be some need to reword some of these items in the evaluation chart. So, the correct response here is true. And the reason is, when you look at Section 1, the eligible project types, this fits into Line 5, which is greenfield office development. So, at this point, we would go ahead and answer yes on Line 5 and proceed to Section 2 and look at the specific project costs. So, on this development, the TIF request is for four things. The first item is stormwater management to meet the city's stringent requirements. So, in this case, they're looking to meet the city's requirements but not to exceed them. They're requesting $150,000 in TIF. The second item is structural fill, and that's due to the poor soils on the site. And they're requesting $200,000. The third item is LED lighting for interior of the building and parking lot, and they're requesting $20,000 for that. And then the fourth item is economic incentives for the 40 jobs that are being relocated from another community in Dane County, and they're requesting $18,000 in TIF assistance. So, this is a tricky one. Multiple choice, which items are eligible for TIF assistance for the approved policy? A is 1 and 2, so that's the stormwater management to meet the city's requirements, and structural fill because of the poor soils. B is just Item 2, which is the structural fill. C is all of the above, and D is none of the above.
Isn't all of the above the same as 1 and 2?
No. C would include 1, 2, 3, and...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Got it, got it, got it. I'm sorry. My bad. You're talking about 1, 2, 4. Got it, yep.
Okay, so, a majority of folks responded B, which is 2, just the structural fill due to the presence of poor soils, and that is the correct response in this case. The reason that the stormwater management wouldn't be TIF eligible is it's simply to meet the city's requirements, not to exceed them. So, that's not considered an extraordinary cost above and beyond the normal cost of development. Poor soils for construction purposes is listed. If you look at Line 10, remediation of soils that are of poor quality for construction purposes. LED lighting was something that the city used to incentivize about 10 years ago, but now it's really standard in the market and we don't typically recommend TIF for LED lighting. And we also don't recommend TIF when it's simply jobs that are being relocated from another nearby community and not new jobs that are being created. So, if you look at the high-site development recently that the city approved TIF for, it was only for the 50 new jobs that would be created, not for jobs that are coming from another community. So, now we would go ahead for this one and we would proceed to Section 3 and look at the financial feasibility considerations.
Yeah, and Abby mentioned as part of your packets, you do have the big pull-out sheets of the cash flow analysis, for Examples 2 and 3. We aren't planning to walk through those today. They're really just for your purposes, to give you an example that you can take with you to look at in more detail. But on each of those, in the top center, there's kind of a tan-colored box that highlights the financial metrics, and those are the items that we've pulled out and put on the screen. So, if you want to just look on the screen for the purpose of the example today, that has the key information. And so, first, we would look at the pro forma and the cash flow analysis without any TIF assistance. So, we're just looking at the base project with all of their costs without TIF to see what the returns look like. And based on the information that was provided in this pro forma, we're calculating a cash-on-cash return of 9.4% on average during the life of the first 15 years. That's right in the middle of the cash-on-cash return range of 6% to 12%. And then the internal rate of return is calculated at 12.3% after 15 years. The developer fee is at 5%. And at this point, since we're not considering TIF, the last two items don't apply.
Do you want to go back and see that some more before you have to respond to a question about it?
So, the question would be, true or false, would this meet the requirements for the financial consideration to consider a need for TIF financially for this project?
Everybody ready to go to the question? Again, pretty split, but we have more people responding that this is false and that is correct.
Yeah, and the reason why we indicated false here is that for the cash flow and the internal rate of return, we're projecting that both of those would fall within what we would consider to be typical ranges. The internal rate of return in particular is very close to the bottom end. And I should add that these ranges are meant to be a guideline. It's not a completely black and white, that if it's in, it absolutely does not qualify if it's out. But they're to give some guidance for the finance committee and then the council as they're evaluating projects and doing negotiations. But for this example, we would say, or challenge the developer to say, even though you have some extraordinary costs, it looks like you have a reasonable rate of return. We would really want to understand why is TIF assistance needed to make this project happen.
All right. And the third example we have for you is a small mixed-use development in downtown Middleton. This site is .14 acres. The current value is $150,000, and that includes land and the building. The estimated completed value is $1.8 million. The developer is proposing a 12,000-square-foot downtown redevelopment project that includes demolition of a dilapidated, vacant one-story building and redevelopment into a three-story mixed-use building with an art gallery on the first floor, an office suite on the second floor, and two market rate apartments on the third floor. The site is not wide enough to accommodate underground parking. The developer has submitted a soils report showing that there is some PAH contamination on site that will require remediation. There are also some minimal utility relocations that will be required. So, using only Section 1, please respond whether this project meets the requirements of Section 1 and should proceed to Section 2. A is true and B is false. 100% responded true. That's great. This one is true. And it actually meets a couple of the categories. This is a redevelopment project and it also could be considered blight elimination as well to remove the dilapidated one-story building.
And mixed use?
Yep. So, for this project, there's a TIF request for three items. One is soil remediation due to the contamination, and that's $100,000. Item 2 is demolition, and that's $75,000. And 3 is utility relocation, which is $20,000. Items are eligible for TIF and using Section 2 of the evaluation chart. A is 1 and 2. B is 2. C is 1 and 3. And D is all of the above. We got 13. I think that's the highest number of responses. Oh, 14! Good job. Great. Okay. So, we've got some across-the-board responses here. It looks like a majority thought that all of the above would be TIF eligible. And that was our staff recommendation, is that all of these items would be TIF eligible per our review of the policy. And the reason for that is that soil remediation due to contamination is listed Line 9. Demolition is Line 8. And utility relocation is Line 7, and that would fall under public infrastructure necessary for the proposed project.
So, why should we be paying for the demolition? I mean, that's what they normally do.
Demolition of an existing building?
Yeah.
That's commonly considered a TIF eligible cost, and it is listed in the approved TIF policy that demolition of existing structure would be TIF eligible.
I would suggest too, because it's such a small plot of land between two buildings and that contamination, you really have to, just as...
When you compare a redevelopment site to a greenfield site, a greenfield site doesn't have demolition costs, and so that's why demolition is viewed as an extraordinary So, now we would proceed to the financial feasibility considerations for this development.
Yeah, so this chart, again, looks at the, looking at the pro forma, before any TIF assistance would be factored in, what are the projected rate of returns for the cost? So, here, the cash-on-cash return is at 5.9%, very close to the range, but just slightly outside of what the typical range might be. Internal rate of return is projected at 8.4%, and the developer fee is at 3.3%. So, the question would be, based on this set of numbers, before we factor in the TIF assistance, would we consider that there might be a reason for financial assistance to be warranted for the project?
So, this project meets the requirements of Section 3 and should proceed for additional evaluation. All right, we've got 14. 79% thought this was true. And the correct answer in this case is true. And the reason for that is that without TIF assistance, the internal rate of return and the cash-on-cash return don't fall into the normal range.
Yeah, and in particular, I would say that the internal rate of return being that much outside of the range would cause us to say, well, there might be a financial need for TIF for this project. So, then the next step would be looking at, if we do start to factor in some level of TIF assistance for the TIF eligible costs, what does that do to the model? And we would run this again with the proposed TIF assistance. And that would be part of those discussions with the finance committee and then ultimately the council on negotiating what's an appropriate amount of TIF assistance and what's the appropriate percentage of TIF to apply to the project. So, just for purposes of this example, if we were to say that all of the TIF eligible items would be considered for TIF assistance, and we factor that in, and we apply it in 80% ratio in that last line of the increment going towards the project, we ran the return numbers, that brings the cash-on-cash up to 9.6, which is in the middle of the range. It brings the internal rate of return projection up to 12.9, still on the lower end, but falls more within a typical range. We would say the developer fee with, is, seems reasonable for this type of project. The, looking at the TIF principle as a percent of the developer equity, it's 57%. So, the developer is putting close to twice as much equity in as they would be getting in TIF assistance. We'd be applying 80% of the increment to the project, but considering that it's a small redevelopment project with contaminated soils, that seems like a reasonable percentage. So, those would be part of the discussions we'd be having about what's the appropriate level of assistance and how we want to negotiate the project.
All right. We have one additional question for you to get a general sense of what you thought about the evaluation chart before we go on to discussion and specific recommendations. So, it looks like we could at least be on the right track, maybe with some additional modifications to the chart. So, now we would open it up and hear your comments.
I think this is, I'm very, very happy with what you guys have done. This is excellent.
Yeah, very much so.
It's, it gives us, because not everybody is well-versed, and this gives people a checklist that they can actually go through and look. I like your examples with the typical rate of returns. I just think you guys really did an excellent job.
So, this form would be completed in advance of a discussion before, when it was brought before the finance committee?
Yeah, so, probably what we would do is we would develop our staff recommendation using the same tool, and then we would hand it out at the finance committee along with a copy for you to develop your own because there might be instances where our staff disagrees with, you know, individual finance committee members about which items are met.
Yep.
So, it would be, you know, we would be able to use, both use the same tool.
Got it.
Quick question on number...
Did you have your hand up?
It's okay. On number 5, does that greenfield apply to all the different types that are listed here or is it just greenfield office?
It applies to all of those, and I apologize, I meant to correct this because Mike pointed this out yesterday when we went over the presentation, that it needed to be written more clearly, and I think that's why I threw you off on one of the questions. But greenfield should, yes, it should apply to all of those.
No, it did throw me off.
Yeah, I would say I'm very pleased that we have written a policy now after long, many years of wanting to have one. And I think this is a great start. As we go along, we're going to find something which needs to be changed, but I think it's good we have something which we can start with.
Abby? As a tool, I agree. I think it's great to have something like that. I think there's an awful lot in here, though, that needs a lot of explanation. I think just, you know, just the Section 3, for example, the fact that 23 through 25 need to be a no answer, and 26 and 27 need to be a yes answer in terms of meeting the range, is something that we can probably, you know, get a little tighter on explaining and making it simpler for some of us who need to, you know, for which a lot of this is new. You know, and if you've got new people here bringing in a TIF and evaluating the TIF requirements, it needs a lot more explanation, I think, you know? Making it simpler. But I like it as a tool.
Are you thinking of like a second page just to explain like Line 26 through 27 should be no? Or are you thinking like, just maybe a one-page addendum that you could refer to?
That's not a bad idea, Emily.
Because that way, if you're, if you're, if you're used to the form, you don't need to be looking at it. But if you're new to it, you could just look back and forth.
And in the finance committee closed sessions, Bill will likely go over this section in more detail, but I appreciate your point that it would be also helpful to maybe have something on the flip side with more information.
Yeah, Abby, I think following up on what Kitty's saying is constantly got new people coming on board, on plan commission, council. And form, I think, is great, but there's background education of everything you've gone over today needs, you put the PowerPoint together with a little bit more definitions and so on for a new person that they could look through it.
We could have, I know Mike usually does an introductory session with new council members, so it's possible that we could include an overview of the policy in that.
That's a great idea. Bill, just to...
Bill, just to clarify the point, what we're doing with this new process is we're taking any decision on TIF away from plan commission, giving exclusively to finance and council.
Well, TIF would still...if a project isn't...doesn't have the proper zoning, then the plan commission would look at that aspect before we would bring a TIF request forward. So that's really the role that the plan commission would continue to play. We have a TIF request currently that we're working on, and we haven't brought it forward to the finance committee, because there has not been a recommendation at this point from the plan commission yet.
Well, I understand the process already. So plan commission is still going to have whatever gatekeeping responsibilities to move a project forward.
Yep.
But any talk of...any concept of financial assistance has moved exclusively to finance and council.
Correct, yep.
So Abby, is that true for other municipalities as well?
Yes, yep, that's the more common model.
Okay, Kurt?
No, I was just going to say, no city that I know of sends TIF to the plan commission, because it's just dealing with the numbers. So the recommendation I would have is, when you presented section three, it was almost as if you did numbers 23, 24, 25 as kind of 3A. But it would just be a lot easier on the form if you had a with TIF and without TIF, just side by side, kind of as a...just kind of as a term sheet right there, right away.
I agree with Kurt.
Katie, did you have a question?
I did. I was one of the yes with modifications, only because I want to champion a couple of things from my committees, and one of them is the arts committee, the percent for art, or like a half percent for art. And if that would be one of the choices that would tip, like a half a percent of the increase in value, if that could tip it in the favor of TIF, it might incentivize a builder to add it on to the project. And so if that could be part of the yeses, that might be a perfect way for us to get that added on. I mean, it wouldn't have to be mandatory, but if it helped tip the scale in their favor, if it was on the form, that could be a cool way to do it. And then also, in the sustainability costs, we were talking about bird strike rates, and where glass meets glass at a corner, there's a higher rate of bird kill. And if that could be somewhere, I don't even know if that's necessary on this form, but...
Well, it's a good point that you bring up, because I guess we should say that items seven through 21 are not...this isn't intended to capture every single type of project cost, but these are the most common project costs that we see. The finance committee did make a recommendation on the Graber View senior housing development on Tuesday night, and one of the items listed there was bringing in 25,000 cubic yards of fill to raise the site, because otherwise the stormwater inverts weren't in the right location. So this is not an exhaustive list. There are other things that are likely to come up, that are kind of on a case-by-case, things that we haven't thought of. And maybe over time, we could modify the policy and the chart to reflect new things that we haven't even considered.
Right, makes sense.
And that was the perfect segue into the next section on the agenda.
Yeah, the added question.
I have one question. What Kurt said about it having, like, with TIF, without TIF? How do you do that with TIF? Would you put like a couple scenarios on the mouse, or how do you?
We would probably...the first without TIF scenario wouldn't include anything, and then with TIF, we would probably include only the items that are TIF-eligible in the project cost section. That's how I would do that. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Do you need this?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention, like, for the TIF, I would envision that we would still, as part of the process, at a staff level, be meeting with the developer, reviewing items, trying to identify at least an initial thought of what might be TIF-eligible or not, and also trying to start discussions at the level of TIF assistance. You know, we sometimes will get a TIF request that might be huge, and maybe it comes in at $5 million, and at a staff level, we're already saying, these things aren't going to be TIF-eligible, this rate of return's not going to be something justifying TIF. So then when we would go to the finance committee, I think we would probably show without TIF, and then where we are at an initial staff recommendation.
Yeah.
And then the finance committee can modify from there as appropriate, but I didn't want you to think that we would just be coming in with whatever the developer asks for. We'd probably already try to get that framed closer to the policy when we go to the finance committee.
Do you let the...do you let the developer know if it's like way off-target? Like, if they come in with five and you guys are thinking more like two, do you say, hey, like, we're taking a look, and it's maybe towards two?
Yeah, we would, and the developer, you know, we always let them know that we, as staff, we don't make the decisions. So we could say, we would look at this, we think these are TIF-eligible, and this might be a reasonable amount, but they can come in and make the case for more. So I would see, if we go to finance committee, before the finance committee would meet in closed session, the developer could make their case for why they feel they need a certain level of TIF assistance. Then the finance committee could go into closed session, hear from the staff, do their own evaluation, and give us directions for how to negotiate.
Well, I appreciate that, so the developer's not surprised when we...our agreement with staff. Thank you.
Robert?
The brick-red lines in sections one, two, and three are...seem to be like the acceptance criteria of what allows you to pass that gate. And I would say that the section three, a brick-red bar, I think is incorrect. Maybe I'm just reading it incorrectly, but it says, yes is required for all of the financial feasibility considerations. And if you look at what yes is, it's something within the desired range. That's what threw me off on one of the things, was I said, yeah, it's in the range on cash-on-cash, yes, on the internal rate of return, yes, it's in the development fee. That's actually not the correct acceptance criteria for saying, move that on to section four, so...
Very good catch for bringing that up.
Any other...yes, Kurt?
I just want to make one point relative to the discussion finance committee had a couple weeks ago on the J.T. Klein project, which is that calculation of the developer fee under the low-income housing tax credit is a different approach. It's not the straight 3% to 6% on total development costs. So that's why the policy had the language about trying to also adjust our criteria relative to other federal and state programs.
Thank you, Kurt. Mike?
Just a comment about our historical approach to TIF. In this policy, I'm fully in support of the policy as it is written, but in the past, we, as staff, sometimes told developers, no. Just said carte blanche, no. In recent years, we've allowed the developer to go to the plan commission, and the plan commission might be more interested in the project than the staff was. We've had some recent examples of that. And that could also be for the council as well. So I think what this is allowing is more open discussion about projects that staff might have shut down from the get-go in the past. One example for...one example I can think of is, if you know where the high-rise building is on the Belt Line? I'd been approached by the owner of that property concerning TIF assistance, and I said, well, that just wouldn't qualify. And they never submitted anything, and they built it. So it kind of proved the point that there are some projects where developers will always ask, but you don't have to provide the TIF. And that was one key example. We've also in the past said no to daycare, no to hotels, and no to retail, and we've had some modifications of that over time. And so we'll have more open discussion of that. I think that's overall a good thing, but there are things like that in the past, we just said no. And then, more often than not, the project was built anyway.
Mike, that's always a great start, no to TIF, and then go from there.
Right, well, you know, and developers have a right to petition the plan commission for a change in zoning. They don't have a right to ask for TIF, but we have allowed that as a matter of course. And it's, you know, we don't have to say yes. We can consider, and we should consider, these policy considerations.
Should one of the questions on the form be related to the reliability of the developer? I know, but it could be open to discussion.
So I think that's more of an issue of whether it's going to be developed or financed, or whether the city is going to upfront that money, right? At the discussion in finance, what we did is, so pretty much, the risk for developer finance is on the developer. The city doesn't lose anything. But if the city is advancing those funds, then there's an additional underwriting criteria that the city needs to do diligence on the developer, because we're making that...we're assuming that risk. So yes, that's part of the consideration.
Although, one of the...line 33 says, is the developer and the development team qualified? So that could possibly...
Point taken.
...address that.
All right, we're right on time.
Sorry about that.
So we have...let's just...
I'll start asking more questions.
No. All right, so let's move on to the percent for arts discussion. This came up to me when the council was approving the TIF policy, and Alderwoman Nelson had asked that a percent for arts discussion be considered as part of the TIF policy. There is a line within the TIF policy, and you'll see it on your chart, item 13 for site-specific public art projects. So this has been done in Middleton, where developers come forward and they request TIF to do some sort of artwork on their site. They did that with the Middleton Station Apartments project on Terrace Avenue. It's on a city easement. The artwork is owned by the city, and the selection of the art was done through the Arts Committee. But a percent for arts is a different type of program, so I just wanted to give a brief overview of what that could look like, if it's something that you're interested in considering. All of the images on this slide were taken at the city's Art Walk in 2019, where we had a few hundred people in downtown Middleton looking at artists' displays and purchasing art from local artists. A brief history about the Middleton Arts Committee. The committee was established in '05 as an ad hoc committee by Mayor Zwong, and the purpose of the committee was to accept a donation of artwork, and that is the sculpture that's on the right-hand side. That's the Self-Made Man sculpture. After the committee was created, they actually recommended against accepting the sculpture, but kept proceeding with their work, and in 2007, they were established by ordinance. In 2009, the city council adopted a public art master plan that was funded through a Wisconsin Arts Board mini-grant project. And around that same year was when eventually the Arts Committee developed the criteria and recommended approving the acceptance of the Self-Made Man sculpture, which is now in the media non-dimming way. As part of the public art master planning process, there was quite a significant amount of public input. You can see that Alderperson West was involved at the time. She's included in the slide. We went out to area schools, and we also held sessions here at City Hall, and we had a lot of attendees in order to assist in developing the plan. The master plan does provide a recommendation for a percent for arts program. It stated that 1% of the city's annual capital budget should be directed into the Public Arts Fund, and the Public Art Committee shall be responsible for matching the 1% figure with no less than one private dollar for every public dollar expended. There was an estimated annual budget of $75,000 to $200,000. And importantly, the plan also recommended that no less than 10% of the cost of art be set aside in a maintenance account. The plan recommended many types of public art beyond what people normally think of. Most people's minds immediately go to murals, but there are lots of examples of different types of public art we could consider. They could be events, temporary, it could be street furnishings, it could be sculpture projects, fountains, water features, or even interactive artwork, like the Project Middleton project that we partnered with ETC and Hubbard Avenue Diner to project on the building that houses the senior center. The master plan outlined vision, a vision for public art for several different years, and because it is 2020, I'll go over the vision that we had for 2020. And that is that Middleton would be known for public art, many neighborhoods would have entry artwork, city parks and trails would have a unique character created by the collaboration of artists and park designers, and that bikers and hikers from near and far would come to travel through the famous Middleton Outdoor Museum, which was envisioned to be part of the Creek Corridor Trail. As you can see, we've fallen pretty well behind the vision that was outlined in the plan, and that is largely due to the lack of funding support for public art. The map on the right shows the vision for a spine of public art that would extend all the way from downtown along Parmenter north to the Municipal Operations Center. We do have artwork that is installed near the spine, and we have tried to cluster our limited resources to that corridor where we can, so we can sort of develop that vision. So we have the new Adama mural that's at the Municipal Operations Center. Phase one is completed. We're still trying to raise money for phase two. The police station...
Can you repeat that?
We're still raising money for phase two to complete the Adama mural.
Thank you.
We have about $11,000 toward that project, but we need an extra $38,000 in order to complete phase two of the Adama mural. The first phase was funded entirely by grant and private donations. So the police station has art. We had a planned project in the roundabout that's kind of in flux at this moment. And then we also have some small pedestrian warning signs that were part of the public art program that are located near Parmenter. So the Arts Committee has continued to be busy setting up a really good framework for a public art program, even without the funding to complete projects. So the Arts Committee has established a non-lapsing fund for donations. We have guidelines for accepting donations of public art. We have a de-accessions policy, a maintenance plan for public art, and also have recently been working on an artist in Middleton or AIM directory. So the picture on the bottom in the center, if you haven't seen it yet, is the beautiful Adama mural, phase one. And I think it looks even better when it's gray skies and snow-covered, because the colors just are even more vibrant in that setting. And then on the right, you can see the stained glass images from the conservancy that were incorporated into the design for the police station. A little history on percent for arts programs. This started in the 1930s with construction of the Finnish Parliament Building in Helsinki, and they incorporated percent for arts into the construction of that building. And then, over the next couple of decades, they made it a requirement for all new civic buildings to have 1% of the construction costs dedicated to public art. Philadelphia was the first city in the United States to establish a percent for arts program. They just celebrated their 60-year anniversary, and the images on the right are the pieces in their extensive public art collection. Twenty-eight states have percent for arts. Wisconsin used to be one of them. That was discontinued. There are also 350 public arts programs in the United States. There are two basic examples for how percent for arts can work. The first, the Madison example, is far more common than the second example, but I just want to give you two ideas of what this usually looks like. In Madison, they have a program that applies only to new capital projects in the city's capital budget costing more than $5 million. 1% of the project budget is set aside for public art. The funds are used to create and integrate new public art into construction or remodeling of the project, and they have exemptions for sewer upgrades, not the best location for public art. And also for parking garages, and in my opinion, that's a big miss in their policy, because if anything needs art incorporation, it's a public parking garage. On the right-hand side, you can see an installation that was done in 2018 by the artist Marcia Yap. This was done as part of the Monroe Street Reconstruction Project, and there are three public art pieces incorporated into that design. So they do not exempt road projects from their policy. In Green Bay, they have the model that's less common, and this...their model applies to private development projects requesting TIF assistance. So this is more in line, I think, with what Alderwoman Nelson suggested for Middleton. So this is more in line, I think, with what Alderwoman Nelson suggested for Middleton. They require that 1% of the estimated property value for a TIF project is set aside for public art projects. Just in internal staff discussions, we felt that if the city were to move in the direction of this type of public art, percent for arts program, we would probably recommend that it's 1% of the TIF request, not 1% of the estimated completed property value. The funds are used to create and integrate new public art into development or at another location within a half a mile, and funding can also be used for design and maintenance of art, and this is one of the projects that came from their program. We would recommend, again, that if the city wants to move in this direction, that all public art decisions are still held in the hands of the city, so we would still go through the typical public process where we would send out a request for proposals, we would get project proposals back, and then the Arts Committee, making a recommendation to the City Council, would select the artwork. That wouldn't be in the hands of the private development, but rather would go through the public process with input from the developer, and that was what was done with the Middleton Station project.
Abby, would you be recommending that the art could go at another location within a half mile?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense because some development sites don't really have a very good public-facing
Right.
...location for art, and the idea, the whole idea behind public art is that you shouldn't have to step into a museum to see artwork, it should just be part of your daily infrastructure in the city that people can see and appreciate.
So this would be a way to get contributions for the Parmenter Roundabout?
It could, yep. This last slide is just showing the economic impact of investments in the arts. We have a statewide arts agency, it's called Arts Wisconsin, they work with the National Endowment for the Arts, and annually, there is a report put out about the economic impact of art. And Wisconsin is one of the last in spending. I think we're ranked 48th in the nation, lowest for spending on art and culture, and still, $9.7 billion is contributed to the Wisconsin economy from the arts and culture sector. It makes up 3.1% of Wisconsin's economy and supplies over 94,000 jobs in the state. And that is all that I had for you.
Thank you for that.
So you're, I think I'd like to see some modeling, I guess. You're asking for 1% of construction costs or 1% of property value, or what is it for TIF?
At this point, we haven't made any recommendations. This is just a background on what other communities are doing. One outcome from this meeting could be that the Arts Committee could take up a discussion and make some recommendations, working with Bill on the financial aspect, but at this point, we don't have any recommendations.
But your working theory was kind of 1% of the TIF award.
Right, yeah, I mean, it could be 1%, it could be 2%, it could be a half a percent. There's some flexibility, and we could model different ideas.
So are you suggesting that if a developer is asking for $100 of TIF assistance, that you're going to require that one of the TIF assistance dollars goes to art?
Yes.
Then the developer's really off the hook, right? Why aren't you, I want to get clarity on who's paying for this. Maybe the better approach is to say, you know what, from a development perspective, the developer has to kick in some percentage as part of their development, well, not even development, they have to kick in some point, some percentage, and maybe what you do is say, "TIF will match that."
That's a good point.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Like a .5%, .5% or something like that?
Yeah, I like that.
However you do it, I just think that, you know, you just can't say it's 1% because the developer, they'll just take that, they'll take that out of their TIF money, and that doesn't cost them anything.
Right.
So I'm thinking back to some of the projects that I've seen produced in the last couple of years, and I remember that there's art often on those developments. Is that just coincidental, like that developer felt like building them, or was that an encouraged thing that we are now formalizing?
The only development that I'm aware of that the city provided TIF support for is the Middleton Station Apartments project with this Quadrants Weather Vane sculpture. So that sculpture is owned by the city, maintained by the city. In fact, it was recently taken to the MoC for conservation purposes. There have been some other examples, like I know Jacob Klein for Meadow Ridge Apartments, he came to the Arts Committee, was interested in doing something on his property. I personally wouldn't really consider it public art necessarily because it's not visible from any right-of-way, it's behind the building, and it, there's a seating area around it that's primarily used by tenants of the apartments. But he did come to the Arts Committee for guidance and assistance on selecting an artist for that project.
I was thinking of, I think it's the Lisa Lane project, which might be that one?
Yep, it's the same one.
And then I was thinking of, isn't T-Wall doing one for the park near Parmenter?
What T-Wall has proposed for the Conservancy Bend project is instead of incorporating private art on his site, which would have been very accessible to the public, he would be planning to donate $15,000 for the city's project in the Roundabout.
Roundabout, okay. So is this just because it's trendy and they like it, or is it going back to what he's saying, which is it's not using TIF dollars, it's using developer dollars?
This, in T-Wall's case, that would be all privately funded by the developer. I think it really, there has been a lot of interest from local developers, so Brad Hutter and Brad Dusler with MIG in particular, and also with T-Wall. I think that they see a benefit to having public art, especially near their building. I think it helps them attract tenants, it's an aesthetic enhancement to their development, and that's why they see the benefit.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Plan Commission? Now, there was that Self-Made Man, and there's some other art in that park too, that's all funded by the developer there, so...
Yes, but Bob Letner
Yes.
...with the Airport Road Business Park is very supportive of art, has a large collection himself, and includes art on most of his private development projects.
Yep, yep. He has actually at least three pieces, the Self-Made Man synergy, and then the kids going down the hill, so...
Oh.
Okay, well...
Is that all you have for us on this thing?
That's it, yep.
Well, then, we're pretty close to on schedule, so this will be our break time, come back at 10:15.
And that's true for Plan Commission as well.
There's no food, by the way. Anybody in the neighborhood hungry?